All right, let's find our seats. Welcome to the 5:30 PM, January 24th, 2023, Presentation City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much. City Manager, Special Recognitions and Presentations.
Yes, we have three special recognitions this evening. The first will be Carrie Lublinski, and I believe Mr. Thomas will be doing the presentation.
Is that on? That guy now.
Jim Thomas, Community Relations. Oh, cool. Anyway, I'm here today to recognize Carrie Levesque as Employee of the Month for November. And although we are very specific about why we nominated her, I'd be remiss not mentioning just a few of the things that she does for our community and the fire department. Life safety, educational programs, campaigns for children and adults, orchestrates many seasonal programs, including Fire Prevention Week, teaches safety in local schools, arranges fire station tours, bicycle safety, helmet distribution, children car seat safety and distribution, and you've heard the term unsung hero. Well, when one of these guys or the fire department saves a life, you're going to hear about that in the evening, on the news, on the internet. But she saves a life, you're never going to hear about it because it doesn't happen. And that's what her program's all about, is education. So that's her deal. The reason we chose her was we were tasked with putting together a retirement program for Peggy Busaka here in the chamber. And we had a pretty good PowerPoint. We had William Shatner, this guy from Star Trek, recognizing her retirement. But we needed something else. And I remembered that she had been at the Great Outdoors when Marcia Gacke sat down from the chamber as president. And she did a parody there for Marcia, and it was, I think it was Brady Bunch, Marcia, Gacke, Marcia, Brady.
Yep.
And when she started that, it wasn't our equipment, so I got to say that. But somebody's equipment malfunctioned, and she had nothing. And it looked like it was going to be this very embarrassing moment, but she just stepped right up to the microphone, no background music, no scrolling text or anything, and she did a great job. So I looked, I thought about that, and I said, that's who we need for Peggy's retirement. And I contacted her, and she said, well, I've got some prior commitments and stuff. I said, oh, come on. She's, well, I'll tell you what, let me see if I can get this church that has a stage and you can video it and then play it at her retirement. So that's what we did. And anyway, she performed a parody of Buddy Holly, Peggy Sue. So it was pretty good. And we were at this church, and she was up on a stage, if I recall, and it, I think there was, you know those sky cams they have at the Super Bowl and stuff?
Right.
We didn't have that. Anyway, she was, she was up there, but we had, there was construction going on, those grocery carts, five gallon pallets of paint, all kinds of stuff. So she did her little clip there, and we have a never before seen clip of her being filmed doing that. And if the guys in the back could put that clip up there, we'd appreciate it. You'll see why, how did she keep a straight face? Watch.
If you knew, Peggy Sue, maybe you know why we feel blue without Peggy.
Our sky cam.
High tech.
She didn't even blink when they came by. Congratulations.
I didn't come prepared to sing today.
We need a live performance.
I like that high tech grocery cart.
Yeah. Good, huh?
Carrie, thank you for everything you do. From singing songs like that, making songs up, to being a clown.
Yes.
So I appreciate all of that, and you make us a better place. I don't know where I'm looking.
Okay.
Amen.
All right, I have to point it in the microphone just because my parents are watching this on the YouTube link from Michigan. Hi, Mom and Dad, I love you. Thank you for supporting me with all my crazy endeavors. And thank you to the fire department and the city for allowing me to be creative and share it with everybody. So thank you very much.
And next, we'll recognize Ms. Amy Matthews from the Titusville Police Department for Employee of the Month for December 22, and Chief Lau.
She's working backstage, which is one of the reasons she is the recipient here. Mayor, Council, Carrie's mom and dad. It is truly our privilege to recognize Amy Matthews. It really doesn't, everyone knows, I mean, Amy has become the face of the Titusville Police Department, which in our case is a really good thing, that it's Amy's face. But we can go on and on. I do want to hit on this. In after the '07 crash, and between 2007 and 2012, the city really, as all cities around the country, had some really tough times. And we had to cut positions. We cut top tier positions, we cut officer positions, we furloughed, we did whatever we had to do. Well, one of the positions that we got rid of was our outreach, our community outreach, because we needed boots on the ground to actually do crime fighting. And one of the learning curves that we had, I had no idea just how important that outreach was. I mean, it quite frankly is the strength of 10 officers. And then when we hired Amy for this position, we realized it was the strength of 20 officers. So there's statistics that we can go on and on, but Amy does more than 300 events per year. But between October and December, Amy did over 100 community outreach events. And honestly, this kind of ticks us off a little bit. She's being recognized because when Amy works, we're working nights, weekends, all the time. But honestly, we could not ask for a better representative of our city, of our department. And thank you so much, Amy, for everything that you do.
Thanks, my pleasure.
I was going to say, I've known Amy since high school, but don't get that wrong, I wasn't a student when she was a student. But I was at Titus High School coaching when she was there, and she certainly is somebody who brought a spirit there, the same spirit that she brings to Titusville. It's not just for the police or the fire or the, it's for our entire city. And if you ever go to an event where she's at, there's going to be happiness there, or she'll make sure there is. So with that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Where we at now? Well, if this isn't good, let's go out this way. There we go, perfect. Not talking to me? You want to say something?
Oh, I just want to say, it's a team effort always, and I have such a great, you know, all the police officers that help me and my command staff, they're amazing. And thank you so much for supporting me over these last eight years, it's been great. Thank you.
And last, Mr. Steve Adams will present to Michelle Walker, who is our Employee of the Month for January 2023.
Hello, Council. Unfortunately, Michelle could not attend this evening, so I'll just give you a little brief about Michelle. She's our development specialist. She runs the front counter of the building department. So she's quite honestly the face of our department. She's the first point of contact, and she is an exceptional employee that finds herself in a very challenging environment as we continue to see record-setting development activity. She does it with dignity and grace and a tremendous amount of patience. So that's why we selected Michelle as our Employee of the Month. She's a fantastic staff member, and if you haven't had a chance to meet with her, do yourself a favor and stop by, introduce yourself, and I think you'll be very pleased. Michelle Walker?
Thank you.
Mayor, we're on to item 4B, which is the Indian River Lagoon Presentation. Dr. Charles Jacoby from the St. John's River Management District will provide a presentation, and I believe you have additional people with you as well to be introduced.
Well, thank you for being here. That's first and foremost, thank you for being here.
Good evening, I'm Mary Ellen Winkler. I'm the Assistant Executive Director of the St. John's River Water Management District and a Titusville native, graduate of Titusville High School. So I wanted to come here when we were invited. I wanted to make sure that I personally appeared because the Indian River Lagoon means the world to me. Born and raised here, so I wanted to reassure you, the commission, of our commitment to the Indian River Lagoon. Just a week ago, our governor issued an executive order highlighting the Indian River Lagoon and has committed to working towards additional funding. Just last week, our governing board awarded a $20 million contract for an Indian River Lagoon project to address, really preventing more nutrients, phosphorus and nitrogen, from going into the lagoon. So I wanted to let you know, we are fully committed. I personally, it means the world to me. So I wanted to let you know, please, if you need anything, we'd love to work with the city, and we're here to support you and your work that you're doing with the lagoon. We know you've just been awarded some project money as well. So just wanted to personally introduce myself. I've been with the district, Water Management District, for 23 years, but now the new Assistant Executive Director, and just could not miss this opportunity to come to my hometown and pledge our support. And with that, I'm going to introduce the true expert, Dr. Jacoby. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Chuck Jacoby from the St. John's River Water Management District, and we're going to talk a little bit about the Indian River Lagoon. So this is kind of where we're headed. Talk a little bit about where the lagoon sits at the moment, provide some information about why we've seen some of the changes that we've seen in the recent past, then discuss how plans and actions are underway to restore the lagoon to a healthier state. Touch on a little bit of some additional concerns, because there are things that float around that people bring up all the time, and then kind of summarize some lessons learned, as it were. And happy to answer questions, I have two from Councilor Nelson already, so I'll have those to start with. So first of all, what's the status of the lagoon? Well, the lagoon has some issues. So these quotes talk about discolored water, dead fish, bad smells, people being confused about why this lagoon is what it is, and that's back from around 1900. So this brings up a few points about things that we've seen, some of the phytoplankton blooms, as they're called, the algal blooms, is that not all of them are bad, they're a part of the productive system. Where we get ourselves in strife is when human activities exacerbate those blooms. They make them more intense, they make them last longer, they make them more widespread, and that's when we have problems. The system itself has, in a sense, these shock absorbers that allow it to cope with some of the events that existed in the past. And as we'll see later, we stress those shock absorbers. So seagrass is a good indicator of the health of the lagoon because it's a really important habitat, I think many of you probably know that already. But it also integrates and sums up the water quality. So water quality conditions change fairly rapidly, seagrasses change much more slowly. They sum up water quality over a period of time, and that's what we're looking for as a good indicator. And the lagoon was gaining seagrass from like 1992 to 2009, which you can see in these maps with the green areas being the seagrass, red arrows pointing out some gains in Banana River Lagoon. Same thing played out other places, this just lends itself to figures, as it were. Then we had 2011, and we lost about 40% of the acreage of the seagrass in the lagoon from sort of 2010 to 2011. And the losses have actually continued, and we're now down to a loss of about 75% of the seagrass that was here in 2009. And about, that's the footprint, and about 89% of the cover. So the seagrass is not only, doesn't cover as much area, but what seagrass is there is sparser. And the loss of seagrass has led us to some other issues. There are fish kills associated with the blooms, and we'll talk about that in a little bit as well. But these unusual mortality events are UMEs. And as they're being looked at, they more and more seem to relate back to that change in the habitat. And that forced a change in the diet of the manatees, it changed the way the fish were behaving, that the dolphins fed on and so forth. So we're linking back to these changes. So obviously, one of the big questions is, well, you know, why? What happened? It basically, it starts a long time ago, right? It starts back in about 1950 to 1960, when the population along the lagoon started to rise. And you can see it rose fairly rapidly. And that's about the time when air conditioning came into effect, which made it more bearable, or as my wife would say, bearable at all, in Florida. And so what you see is, when you have a lot more people, the activities tend to put stress on systems. And a lot of that revolves around nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus, the nutrients that plants use and that we get from plants and so forth. And those come from a variety of sources. Stormwater, which is inputs driven by rainfall, you know, goes through urban areas, agriculture areas, residential areas, and it picks up these loads of nutrients, what we call non-point source loads. But base flow, the kind of, you know, just the groundwater and so forth that goes in the lagoon, also affects it. And both of those, we put diversions in where we moved water from essentially west of I-95 over to the lagoon. That water normally would have gone to St. John's River. With that comes more loads. One thing I'll point out is up in the corner there is the red box, and so this is kind of looking backward, but the district and others also try to look forward. So the environmental resource permits and things like that are looking forward to prevent some of the damage that we've seen from past actions. In the lagoon, we also have some other sources that are in yellow text on the slide. So atmospheric deposition, you know, nutrients that come from the sky, as it were, and both dry and wet. Submarine groundwater, which enters the lagoon, and what has become called muck, which is fine sediment with a little bit more organic matter in it that settles in the low places in the lagoon. Bacteria operate on that organic matter, that's just basically biological material, and they release nitrogen and phosphorus into the water column. So there's like an internal legacy load that we built up over time. That's built up since the 50s, and that's something that we address as well. But the structure, just the basic structure and functioning of the lagoon also lend to some challenges. There we go. And so this slide summarizes some of those facts. The lagoon is a, they're a set of receiving water bodies, is what we call them, right? So the water comes from the watershed and ends up in the lagoon. So they sum up all those inputs from the watershed. The system is not a river. It doesn't have a strong hydrologic flow. So in combination, these characteristics create segments in the lagoon where there are portions of it that don't mix between those segments very well. And the graphic kind of gives you an idea of that. So that's from a model that looks at mixing in the lagoon. The more, the hotter the colors, the more orange and so forth, the longer the water has been in the lagoon. And so if you look, Banana River Lagoon, that northern tip of that, you know, water will stay there for, you know, up to around four years, three and a half years. And around Titusville, you know, water's, on average, as it were, stays there about a year, a year and a half. So again, things that go in the lagoon stay there a while, and that's an important thing to remember. Now, there's, I'll often talk about changing the characteristics of the lagoon, but that could be problematic because, you know, if you change those, you may get an undesirable effect. But it does pose challenges for putting in projects. So if you think of projects like in the Everglades, there's a flow that goes through the Everglades from north to south. You can do an upstream project and benefit the downstream part of the Everglades. That doesn't work quite so well in the lagoon. If you think of a typical lake, you can do a project on one shore of the lake, it'll benefit the whole lake because the lake's fairly well mixed. Again, not so true of the lagoon. So that makes challenging to deal with the nutrient inputs. So the main reason seagrasses died, that we, from our data and everything we can see, is that was shaded by blooms of single cell algae or what we call phytoplankton. This slide shows you the 2016 brown tide that, you know, many of you might remember. But that was the only bloom that we worry about. So these are satellite images, and then what we've done is we've taken the light that comes, that the satellite picks up, and use that with our water quality data to model chlorophyll concentrations. Chlorophyll is the way we estimate the biomass, the amount of phytoplankton that's in the water column. So again, the hotter colors is more phytoplankton, the water's going to be less clear. And you can see that we had blooms in 2011, that was what we used to call the super bloom, 2012, 2016, which was very extensive and actually had a fairly major fish kill associated with it, 2019 and 2020. So, you know, we've had this series of these extensive, intensive blooms, and that's what's caused the problem with seagrasses. Now, the fish kills along the bottom, you'll see you don't always have a fish kill with every bloom, and that's because this is not, these are not toxic blooms like the red tide on the west coast, right? These are, the reason you have a fish kill is because all of that phytoplankton can at some times just sort of die in a few days. When that happens, the bacteria start to chew on those cells, and they use up all the oxygen in the water, and that stresses the fish and so forth. So beyond the changes in the quantity of phytoplankton, we've also seen changes in the quality of them. So the players in the game, as it were, are different. The older players are shown on the left, and the newer players are shown on the right. And so what's different is that the newer players are smaller. So what do I mean by smaller? Well, if you have a page of text in front of you, you can put 200 to 500 of those phytoplankton cells across the period at the end of a sentence. So that's how small they are. The old players, it was more like 50, 5 to 50 that would fit across there. So the smaller, the smaller phytoplankton churn faster, they divide faster. So they build up numbers much more quickly. There are also, it turns out, some of the ones we've encountered are a little harder to control. They outcompete some of the other users of the nitrogen and phosphorus, and they can have, they have mechanisms that stop them from being eaten. So one of them, what's called the brown tide, produces like a mucus, and that bothers the fish and other things that would graze on those cells. So again, they build up more. Now, the old players didn't go away, they just became less dominant as these new players kind of took over. So one of the things we've been looking at is, so why, you know, why all these changes? And again, it goes back to the fact that we've been putting pressure on the system for decades. And all that begins to add up. And again, I talked about the shock absorbers that, you know, allow the system to cope sometimes with these events. So seagrasses would rebound. Well, over the decades, they've been pressed enough that they actually failed. When we had in around 2010, what we sort of call a perfect storm. And so that perfect storm was a combination of warm and cold weather, so very warm summers and very cold winters, sort of twice in a row. So one of the things you saw with the cold was a fish kill. And so this is an image, and the Kennedy Space Center folks collected about 400 tons of fish just up and around Kennedy Space Center. So that's only a portion of what was in the lagoon. Now, when those fish sink, which most of them did, and then they rot, that's more nutrients into the system in a pulse. Which again, if the system's shock absorbers were in good shape, it would probably cope with. The warmer summers also generated more nitrogen and phosphorus because it activates the bacterial action that's in the muck, right? So the bacteria that are chewing up on the organic matter in the muck put out more nitrogen and phosphorus. And then the warm and the cold, and then when the phytoplankton started to bloom, the reduction in light affected the other things that compete for those nutrients, which are algae, like on the, sort of, the two, the picture to the left there, and then seagrasses. And so you had less competition, so there were more nutrients for the phytoplankton again. So it was a sort of a spiral. So it was a sort of a spiral. So the bottom line is, you know, the system's changed, and we're certainly working to restore that system. So just want to go through some of the things that are going on. Way back in the late 90s, the district noticed that there were issues with the seagrasses and took a look and figured out that a lot of it had to do with these blooms and with the suspended solids that came in with some of the inputs. So that started to prompt restoration, and that's when the decision to use the deep edge of the seagrass beds as an indicator of the health of the lagoon really was begun. Now, I think most of you probably will be familiar with the total maximum daily load process, which is then generates reductions in nutrient loads if the loads that exist are higher than the safe load, which is the total maximum daily load that's calculated. And that's how those changes get encoded into basin management action plans or BMAPs. And you may have even heard of the alternative approach, which is a sort of a stakeholder-driven approach, which is a reasonable action plan, and that's what's being done up in Mesquite Lagoon. But both of those are commitments to reduce loads based on these estimates of how much the system can handle and how much is actually going in. And so those are all underway at the moment. And this is kind of a framework that'll give you a little idea of what people are doing to address those. This is Brevard County's framework. And we've overlaid one where we use a sort of a medical analogy. So you have putting the system on a diet, which is reducing loads, external loads, giving the system exercise, which is removing that legacy load, such as dredging muck. And then physical therapy, which is to restore some of the damaged habitats, things like the wetlands can help us because it, it slows down those inputs of nutrients and allows the system to cope better. And then regular checks and preventative care, so checking what's going on in the system and then using that to help adjust projects and things. So projects have been going on for a while, and, you know, there are credits for these reductions, and the pie charts give you an idea of where we stand. The reasonable assurance plan for Mesquite Lagoon, the one on the left, is the youngest, so it's in early, early days. But basically, for all the rest, the 15-year timelines, the milestones along a 15-year path are being hit. But we're generally speaking about maybe near halfway to the goal. So we're not all the way home yet. And that's something you might want to remember as I get to the end of the talk. So who's doing all these projects? Well, you know, about Brevard County and the half cent sale tax, right? And the 500 million plus that they're putting into the lagoon. But they're not the only player. I mean, they are a major player, for sure. The Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, which is one of 28 estuary programs around the nation. They use this vital signs wheel as their sort of guide to what they are targeting in their comprehensive conservation and management plan. And this group is led by a group, IRL council, which consists of the DEP, Southwater Water Management District, St. John's River Water Management District, and the five counties with significant shoreline along the lagoon. For Brevard, Commissioner Felter is your new representative to the council, and Commissioner Pritchett is the alter. And each organization contributes funding, and that generates about $1 million a year for projects. The state of Florida is also doing their bit. In 2020, there was $25 million allocated to work on, along the lagoon. There was more than $53 million invested in improvements of wastewater treatment in 2021. And this table on the figure here shows you the $20 million for treating stormwater that was just put out the other day. And the boxes show you the five projects that have the name Titusville attached to them. And then you may have heard of the executive order that was released, which is meant to provide $100 million a year for at least four years to the lagoon. And we'll see how that's going to play out as we go forward. The district is supporting things. So this map shows you 33 cost share projects that benefit Brevard County, which is an investment of about 17 million. And there are also seven district-led projects and three projects that look at habitat restoration or physical therapy. The district also conducts a lot of regular checkups. So this shows you various types of monitoring. There, we have continuous monitoring devices that tell imiter in data on an hourly basis. We have sampling stations where we do water quality every month. We have seagrass transects that are done twice a year, and then we map seagrass every other year. And again, all of these things tell us how the system's doing, are we getting where we want to go. Okay, so are nutrients the only concern? Well, not totally, and I think we need to remember that we're going to have to juggle more than one thing at a time. So when we talk about issues, we should talk about and rather than or. And we should also try to not turn a problem into the problem because that's not how this works. We're going to have to deal with multiple issues. So this is about sewage spills, and no one wants sewage spills. Talks about the 7.2 million gallons in 2020 entering near Titusville. And if you estimate, if take a look at that, you get about 2100 pounds of nitrogen, 421 pounds of phosphorus being put into the lagoon. But if you then look at septic systems and the loadings that are estimated for those, on the far, the bottom right there, it comes out about two days' worth of septic loads. So again, something to address, definitely, but, you know, keep a focus on the big issue at the same time. Herbicides is another issue that comes up. And again, no one wants problems with herbicides. But if we take a look at what kind of amount of herbicides you would need to get a change like we saw in Banana River Lagoon between 2010 and 2011, which was an 87% loss of seagrass, when you look at that and say, what if we, what if a tenth of the safe dose could cause a problem? Well, still, to get that concentration, you'd need about 62 million pounds of glyphosate entering the water column. And that would represent, if you look at the bottom right there, about 24 times the amount of glyphosate that was used in the whole United States in that one year. So again, something we should be concerned about, but, you know, is it the problem? All right, a lot of information in a reasonably short period of time. So what are some take-on messages? Well, for me, stay the course is the key one, not to lose the focus, to keep doing the things that we've been doing in terms of diets, exercise, physical therapy, and, you know, tracking the system. And why do I say that? Well, we took some of our data, and we have a model that predicts water quality. This is that satellite image again with the chlorophyll values modeled into it. That's from the middle of what was called the super bloom, so July 2011. If we ran the model for that, from 2007 through that same period, we'd get something like this. And so you, if you look, you know, the orange and the red, the oranges and red are more chlorophyll, and they match up pretty good. Then said, what happened if in 2007, we had part of the TFDL met? So went from 25 to 50 to 75 to 100% of the TFDL met in 2007. Well, if you look, it's not until about 75% is met that you begin to see a real change in that bloom. So that's kind of where we're going to need to get to perhaps before we see a change. A couple other things maybe to think about is we've learned that we may need to leave some elbow room in the management, right? Because the system was ticking along, and then we had that sort of set of weather events, and the system just tipped over. So we might need to think of TFDLs with a little more safety margin. That nutrients, that how they behave in the system, how they cycle, that's also important, not just what gets in, but what happens once it gets in. And then with our chlorophyll issues with the phytoplankton blooms, you know, who is creating that chlorophyll? Because they have different characteristics. And lastly, and perhaps most importantly, I guess, the shift in the system, you know, may make recovery a little bit harder. We pushed it pretty hard, and it may take a while longer than we thought to get it back. And I'm happy to answer questions. I have two already.
I'm looking for your light, I'm sure you do.
Good.
Yeah, Member Nelson.
I'm good. I did send you questions, now I have four questions. But the first question was, we were talking about testing in the stormwater, the outflows, and then somebody suggested testing in the ponds itself. Your opinion?
So when I, you know, I hear the word testing, it makes me think of two kinds of sampling. One would be what I would look at as being sort of short to medium term, and that would be to figure out, you know, if you're treating stormwater, how's the system functioning? What are the components of what's coming in? How, what's, components of what's coming out? How does that vary with things like rainfall, you know, and the residence time in the system? But the other, the other thing I think about is what I'll call monitoring, which is the long-term tracking of how the system's behaving so that you have the data to feed back in to adjust the system, and you also have data where you can show accountability for the fact that system's working. Now, in both cases, those are, you know, those are cost-benefit analyses in essence. And to really do that would take, you know, some reasonable amount of discussion. You know, what would we gain? And what's the risks if we don't have it? Again, I would, you know, probably you asked, I think, in the email about, you know, what will we focus on? And again, I think, you know, nutrients would be a key, but obviously, as you looked at things, you, you know, may find something else that you want to track as well, so.
Okay. That was, that was one question, because I was trying to figure out, is it worth it? Are you guys doing enough testing in the lagoon that maybe we're being redundant?
So, you know, our testing, our monitoring, those points are basically all in the lagoon, and that's meant to sum up, in essence, you know, everybody's efforts, you know, and everybody's inputs. So we don't have real localized testing that would help you answer some of these questions that you might be being asked at this point.
I have one other question in there. Mr., Dr. Jacoby, do you remember what the second question was?
Oh, yes, freshwater and seagrass.
Seagrass.
So, I mean, freshwater does affect seagrass. Seagrass does do better in sort of brackish and saline water. And there are times and places where, you know, freshwater inputs will have affected seagrasses in and around the lagoon. Generally speaking, if seagrasses have enough light, they can cope with low salinities fairly well. It's, it's sort of the combination of reducing the light and then hitting them with freshwater, or reducing the light and hitting them with extreme temperatures, that's when they struggle. And so generally speaking, you know, I mean, we can see some changes in seagrass related to salinity, but generally speaking, it's not what has driven these massive changes.
Okay. You had said something, and I don't want to misquote you, so bear with me if I do, just stop me.
Okay.
That basically, our sewer spill, the 7 million gallons, was basically equal to almost two days of a septic tank.
Septic tanks, you know, over the, over Brevard County, as it were, so.
Okay. So basically, one of the, you know, obviously, we have a budget, and we can't go crazy and spend all our money or the sea manager's going to look at us. Yeah, he's going to frown. But it sounds like that is probably one of the best projects, is to start getting rid of the septic tanks.
Certainly, you know, septic tanks near the lagoon are probably a key issue. You know, again, we're, most of the area's sandy, and so, you know, that water moves through pretty quickly. Septic tanks were never designed to treat nutrients. They were designed to treat bacteria and other things like that. So in particular nitrogen, various forms of nitrogen are very water soluble, so they move with the water. Phosphorus sometimes can get bound, but even then, a given patch of ground can only hold so much phosphorus, and then it will pass through as well. So I think, you know, yeah, septic tanks along the lagoon and, you know, near the receiving or the tributaries and so forth, is it definitely a target?
We've identified about 30 that we're working on.
I thought so. You said something that absolutely surprised me, that stormwater from the west side of 95 is coming this way.
Yes.
How did that happen?
Well, people wanted to use the land west of I-95, and water flows downhill most easily, so digging a channel to the Laguna Canal is the way to do it. Now, the district's been working hard to reverse some of that because, in fact, the St. John's River can use the water.
Yeah.
And the lagoon doesn't need it. So we have several projects where essentially you put in a structure, hold, back the water up a little bit, and then pump it and treat it, and then send it to the St. John's River. And the one project that Mary Ellen mentioned is another one of those that'll be starting.
That's, that's great. Okay. And we need to get to a 75% reduction on that BMAP plan?
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's a modeling thing, and, you know, but what I think it showed me was the fact that you aren't seeing it when you're not quite to 50% is probably not a big surprise. So, you know, I'm hoping that what it'll do is just a lot of people say, okay, you know, we've got a little further to go, but we look like we're on the right track, so let's, you know, follow through.
Okay, curiosity. If you have your crystal ball, how long's it going to take us to get to 75%?
The BMAPs are a 15-year process.
Okay.
Three five-year chunks. And so you're just past the middle, and so you're on target to probably be, at the end of this five-year period, there'll be around that point, so.
Which is when?
Uh, 2013.
So we can all go out and look for seagrass.
It's, should be...
We're supposed to be at about 80% at 2032 is the goal, to be that.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't expect it to come back like that, so. But, you know, but yeah, with some clarity, it would come back, I think.
Okay. I think that was all my questions.
Good job.
Oh, Blue Algae Commission.
Blue-green algae?
Blue-green algae.
Task force?
Yeah. They were recommending monitoring?
Well, yeah, so one of, one of the things that has come up, you know, particularly again, is more and more places are making these efforts to restore water bodies, is our ability to demonstrate that what we're doing is having an effect. And, you know, people aren't always that patient for results. So, you know, a little bit more effort at showing what is going on is something that may be useful.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Robinson.
Right, sir. Yes, very, very understandable presentation. Member Nelson answered my question, but my, and that concerned me a great deal with water from the west coming to the east when it should be being diverted elsewhere. And in that, we know that that happened. What, what immediate activities are we doing to try to change that? Because I know too, you got the 24 versus, I think I wrote 62 million pounds and so forth. We need all, Indian River Lagoon need all the help that it can get. And if we have been able to recognize that, that that is a culprit in this particular process, the one that we invented, one we caused, it should be on the A-list, so to speak, to uncause it, if you will. So how are we doing in that process?
You know, again, people are targeting a variety of these inputs. And as Mary Ellen mentioned, you know, the governing board of the district just authorized, as it were, another effort. But, you know, it's, it takes some, it takes some energy to replumb the system. And so you need, you need to have this space to hold the water, you need to have the areas to treat it before it goes to the St. Johns, otherwise you're just shifting the problem.
Yeah, correct.
So, you know, I mean, I think people are working at it as fast as they can, as it were. And there is one project in that has been running for a few years and has, you know, definitely, I mean, so we take measurements of water as it goes into the treatment areas and as it comes out, and we can see the amount of load that's been moved away from the lagoon. And, you know, it's significant, so. And, you know, it's significant, so.
I was just going to add, the Crane Creek Project, the project that Dr. Jacoby just mentioned, we, like I said, the board approved the $20 million last month. We're going to, we're negotiating the contract right now. But basically, that, that project will put a, a structure in at that historic high where the, basically that ridge, that coastal ridge is. And that's going to be the dividing line. And then water's going to be pumped back towards the river. We've, it, they're complex projects to do, very expensive because of the pumping and negotiating. We, that's a project we've worked with jointly with Melbourne, Brevard County. So, a lot of permitting. We've had to do land acquisition for the treatment area. So, it's a very expensive project and a lot of moving parts. But they're projects that everybody's very interested in doing. We've great partnerships. So, that one's moving forward. We also have another project that's in the design, almost at 100% design. So, another similar project where we're going to take one of those old historic canals that were built, I guess, like 100 years ago. Dr. Jacoby somewhere in that, you know, just trying to drain water off agricultural lands. So, we have another canal that we're looking at to do the same thing, where you block the flow and then send the water back. The Crane Creek Project alone, we estimate, will send about 7 million gallons per day of water back to the St. John's River. So, that project's doing two things. It's number one, you know, preventing water that really was never part of the Indian River Lagoon system from going in that direction. But it's also going to send the water back to the St. John's River where it needed to go in the first place and also treat nutrients through a wetland treatment system. So, Crane Creek is funded. And our next project, C-10, we're working on permitting and working through the design now. So, there's more coming. So, we're, we're very excited about the prospects.
Okay, may I ask Mary, a Mary question? My question would be, is that being that we know, we, we know this information. And I know that the St. John's River Management System issued permits for developers. How much of that is being taken into consideration when these permits are, are issued?
We actually have special basin criteria for the lagoon. So, there are certain areas where work, there are special basin criteria so that you, you need to discharge, you can't discharge out to the lagoon. Those historic areas where it needs to go to the river. So, there, we actually have criteria in place through our environmental resource permitting program so that they have to meet those special, we call them special basin criteria. So, the other thing that we do is just the stormwater ponds that you see all around, those systems are designed to be able to provide treatment and, and remove some of the nitrogen and phosphorus. So, you know, we do have, we do award cost share dollars for projects where, you know, some of the older developed areas where they don't have stormwater ponds and they just direct discharge out to the lagoon. We work with local governments and we award cost share dollars to help cities and to basically redirect that water to a stormwater pond to provide treatment before it gets out to the lagoon. So, we award about $25 million a year to local governments. We're happy to work with the city of Titusville on projects and for you all to apply for those funds. But that's a big part of what we do as well, projects with local governments, to take those historic drainage areas in, in older neighborhoods that were developed prior to our rule program and then prior to the permitting program to try and basically retrofit those areas. So, it's, we're doing a lot of different things trying to, to tackle the problem.
Well, I appreciate that, I appreciate the explanation. And it is my hope that since we know our problem and we know how to, what's causing it, that we are very, very active in creating solutions to combat the cause.
Yes, sir.
Member Stokoe?
Yep, thank you. I just had a few clarifying questions regarding the timeline just to help me better understand how we got here. You started with, over 100 years ago, there were fish kills going on at that time. I would assume they were probably more sporadic and the lagoon health was a lot better than it is now. But that was still happening. Correct, and up until basically 1950?
Yes, so, I mean, in fact, the lagoon may be more stable, in a sense, now than it may have been back then because you've locked in some of the inlets and so forth. So, it's, it is possible that, you know, in past history, the lagoon would have been closed off from the Atlantic and become very fresh and be, you know, quite different and then open up again. But you're right, there were issues with fish kills. The system, the system is a productive system. And so, you will get blooms. You will get influxes of nutrients even from natural lands. And those will cause blooms. But what we're, what we're doing with the extra pressure, as it were, is that we're overloading the system to the point where it, it doesn't rebound like it did.
Okay, that leads into my second question, just to help clarify. So, 1950, you said that's when population started to grow. And it's put stress on the system. What do you feel like was the greatest, like proponent of that? Was it developing wetland area that used to not be developed? Was it septic tanks? Was it spills? Like, what do you, what do you feel?
It's, it's the, again, it's an and issue, not an or issue. So, it'll, it would be, you know, digging canals which move the water into the lagoon really fast. Because again, the water used to sort of flow very slowly and plants would take up the nitrogen and phosphorus. It's, you know, if you start putting septic systems along the water body, if you add fertilizer to, you know, do agriculture or, you know, residential lawns or whatever it might be, it's, it's an and issue. And that's what we've been doing. And then, a lot of fine sediments getting into the lagoon and things like grass clippings and people blowing their leaves into, you know, and it gets in the lagoon. And that's what tends to be the organic matter probably in this muck. So, you built that up over time. And now, you've got this internal legacy load, as we call it, that is just pushing against you the whole time.
Yeah, I think that's my fear and challenge, I think, with being on council is this stuff started to happen and like, nobody knew the impacts of it while it was happening. It's like, oh, fertilizer's great, or there's nothing wrong with septic tanks. And now, it's like, once you add all of those together, here we are. And then thinking, I think Vice Mayor was alluded to this, I think with, we're getting a lot more projects now where people are wanting to develop wetlands. And so, that's concerning to me, just being in this position saying, okay, I understand you want to develop your property. But even in the presentation, like that is, the wetlands help our lagoon, the health of our lagoon. And it's like, how do we balance that? And maybe it's a question for you, is, are you guys looking into the policies that you have right now for like, if people wanted to mitigate wetlands, saying, you know, no, you can't really do that because we need the wetlands for this?
So, the way our program works on our environmental resource permitting is if there is a proposal for wetland impacts, they have to provide mitigation. And they can't just provide mitigation anywhere. Our district, what we have is, it is broken into specific drainage basins. So, if you impact a wetland in a particular basin, you have to offset it within that basin. So, that's how we try to make sure that there's not a, a loss in wetlands for that particular basin, that there's not a cumulative impact. And so, a cumulative impact, we, it's like the, you don't want to have cumulative impacts such that you have that project, that's the straw that breaks the camel's back. So, we look very closely at those cumulative impacts to make sure that we're getting mitigation within the basin so that we don't have those issues. So, that's how we, our rule program works. So that whatever impact there is, there's got to be an offset to that. And that's, it's a very, in the last decade, it's, it's, there's a uniform wetland assessment methodology that's very prescribed, lots of numbers to it. So, you kind of analyze the wetland to be impacted, the functions and values that it provides. And then you analyze using that same matrix of values. You have to use a, a matrix, again, to look at the function and values that the mitigation's providing. They've got to offset. Otherwise, we don't issue the permit. So, there's a pretty intensive analysis from our part of what we do to make sure that we have that offset. Now, having said that, we also do have, and we just, our board considered our list of critical wetlands. So, we are, we're always looking at floodplain wetlands and other sensitive areas for acquisition. And Brevard County has several parcels that were just approved by the board to be on our critical wetlands list. So, so we, we do look at, there's our permitting program. But we also do have thousands of acres here in, in Brevard County alone that are flood, typically wetlands and floodplain, that we protect and manage to, to preserve those special, special areas.
That makes me very happy to hear, especially as I'm thinking about just these storms that we've been having that typically it's 100-year storm, seems to be happening more frequently and makes me nervous.
Right, we can, I'd be happy to provide our list of critical wetlands that the board just approved, that is what we would, kind of our top list of if, if money fell from the sky. We had the land acquisition dollars to purchase. But also, we'd be happy to share with you also all of our lands here in Brevard County because we do have lands that aren't honestly too far from here. So, we, we manage those lands. Our staff does a great job.
Yeah, and I think, and I don't want to speak for council, but I think we're just wanting to be very proactive, especially as we're experiencing a lot of growth, just making sure that we're not just approving things and then realizing, you know, 10, 20 years down the road, this was probably not the best decision. So, thank you for the information, the presentation.
Thank you. You, first of all, a couple of things surprised me. 1896 fish kill in the newspaper. And then, 1902 brown murky water, I, I didn't have any idea. So, we've got issues that have gone a long time. Then 1959 came along and it got worse. I'm, I learned a lot this week, for some of you all in here, about septic tanks. Of course, you guys probably already knew it. But I went to a, I don't know, seminar, whatever you want to call it, on whatever night it was. Thursday? Okay, Thursday. Anyway, Indian River Lagoon Coalition? Anyway, septic tanks was, was really the main topic. And I didn't realize, I don't think I realized just how damning, no pun intended, the septic tanks were. Especially when you just noted that our, our, what we considered a very severe, difficult situation with our leak. Two days of septic tanks is more than that?
About equivalent, yeah.
Two days? All right, so this is where I get into, I remember sitting in this very chambers when I was running for office in 2016. And there's an Indian River Lagoon presentation going on that I came to because we were pushing for the Indian River Lagoon half-cent sales tax to pass. They gave a presentation. And they were talking about what's going on here, what's going on here, what's going on here. And it just kind of hit me, we can do an awful lot of things here. Let's just say Titusville, we do this, we, and we clean our part of the fish aquarium. And we clean it, and the windows are clean and everything's good. But yet, the people next to us don't. Well, an aquarium's an aquarium. And whatever I do for my aquarium's going to be affected by what they don't do in their side of the aquarium. I say that because we have about 30 septic tanks along the river that we're, we're going to, we're, we're moving, because there's other people that aren't real excited about us doing this. But we're going to deal with the septic tanks. And we've got about 30. That's important. Sounds more and more important every time I hear something this week. But to our north, MEMS and north, there could be hundreds, as I understand. To our south, Port St. John and south, there are more hundreds. So, we take care of our 30. What about those just over our line that we have no control of?
So, I mean, I guess I'd say a couple of things. One is this point about the lagoon kind of operating in segments. So, you know, again, it's not like the things that are going on in, in St. Lucy make their way up here on a regular basis, right? So, if you take care of your part of the aquarium, it may help take care of your part of the aquarium. But yeah, I mean, everybody has to pitch in. You know, this is a widespread issue. And, you know, with luck, everybody, you know, everybody along the lagoon that has the same problem will start to address it really seriously. And again, I think that's where things like the 100 million, you know, per year for four years or however it turns out, you know, those are the things that may help move the needle.
And I was just going to say, we do, as part of our, the $25 million a year, our district awards in cost shares. Some of that has gone to septic to sewer projects. So, if you have projects that you're interested in, you know, let us know. We're happy to work with you. But also, we, we work with the county and others, you know, in unincorporated areas. So, wherever there's willing participants, we're, we're happy to, to talk and, and see what we can do to assist.
All right, well, thank you. I thought I'd throw that out there because it does concern me, and I know segmented. But just because it runs into the line past MEMS, that's still part of us in Port St. John. Port St. Lucy, maybe not. Port St. John is going to match. So, we get, take care of our septic tanks and we're going to still be dealing with the two days' worth of, oof. Member Nelson?
So, you brought up something that made me think. We're talking about the area to the west of town and trying to get that going toward the St. Johns. There's a ridge that runs through town, a sand bridge. Should we look at seeing if we could get everything from the sand bridge west?
I would probably have to go talk with some of my engineering colleagues to give you a really solid answer to that. But, you know, but again, I think more and more, we're defining where water used to be and where it used to flow. And that's what we're trying to go back to. Because the changes we've made have tended to be ones where we had undesirable consequences. I mean, no, none of the engineers that built those canals said, let's do this because it'll mess up the lagoon. You know, they did it because someone said, we need to get this water off the land. And that was the quickest and easiest way.
We don't, we don't have many. Think about down south of the county when you see those big canals going through. We don't, we don't really have those. Our ridge, most of the stuff, if you look at the basins, most of the stuff on the side of the ridge goes that way. That side of the ridge goes this way. There are a couple I know of, I know Baker subdivision, I believe that area used to go. But that's a much smaller area than you think of the entire area, you know, west of 95. So, we're not, we don't have that big of a problem up here as they do when you think of those big giant canals down the south end of the county.
I would agree. So, we, in our feasibility analysis that we did prior to taking on the Crane Creek Project that I mentioned earlier and some of the others that we're in the design phase on, those were those canals to the south where you get a lot of bang for the buck to do, to do the re-diversion. Up here, it's more, I think, what you're doing and what you got awarded for addressing those older areas that were pre, pre-environmental resource permitting. And, and so, some of those retrofit projects are more, and, and we are looking at that with all of the emphasis on the Indian River Lagoon at this time. We're looking at, okay, what can we do for this area? So, we, we look forward to meeting with staff to see what, what other, what other projects we can think of for this area. So, we, we definitely, when we leave here today, we'll be reaching out to see what we can come up with.
And like I've mentioned before, we have a project, we have a consultant looking at a master CIP plan for the, for our city. So, we're expecting that in April, May-ish. And that'll give us, that'll give us a list of hopefully 10 years of projects where I can go, hey, I need money for this, this, this.
I hope she has some money and she goes, yes, she actually has.
I did apply for one of their grants last week, so I'm still working.
Okay.
All right, we're going to go with Member Cole and then we're going to end this particular one. We've got three more presentations.
Okay, really appreciated your presentation, Dr. Jacoby. My question would be based on the fact of the municipalities that we have in Brevard County along the Indian River Lagoon, to include those that are unincorporated, which would be Brevard County. Is, are there any organizations that work with you? I mean, Titusville is working because Titusville is a city that we want to see the lagoon cleaned. Are there other municipalities along the river? And I'm strictly speaking of Brevard County. And is the Brevard County Commission as involved to get this cleaned too? That's my question.
I would say yes. Certainly, we work with, you know, a range of cities and towns along the lagoon. And the, you know, the, I mean, the sales tax is, you know, again, probably the, taking the lead in making these things happen. So that, you know, the county is out ahead of most other counties. And then there is the National Estuary Program, which, again, we work closely with. And that's bringing all the counties together and their respective municipalities. And all, you know, all of those things, I think, are, you know, are moving us in the right direction. A lot more consensus. moving us in the right direction. A lot more consensus, you know, a lot more agreement on what needs to be done.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I thank you so very much for your efforts, your presentation, your commitment, and thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Both of you. Thank you, guys.
Can the public just ask any questions?
No, not right now. We've got to go. We've got three more presentations, and then petitions or requests will do that. City manager?
Next is item five C, which is a presentation by attorney Nikki Seade of Bryant, Miller, and Olive.
Hello. I hope you all can see and hear me okay. Thank you for allowing me to attend virtually tonight. I've worked with your city attorney, Richard Broome, for many years. I'm board certified in city, county, and local government law, and so I practice alongside him in this area. And we have been asked to present to you this morning on public participation, or sorry, this, this evening, on public participation during your public meetings. So, I'm going to screen share now. I have a very brief PowerPoint to share with you. And I hope you all are able to see my screen okay. Essentially, in my presentation, I'm going to first go over the legal framework that we'll be talking about tonight, which is comprised of mostly two areas, state law and federal law. We'll talk first about the state laws that govern public participation at your council meetings, and then followed by the federal law that bears on this area. The state law primarily comes from section two eighty-six, zero, one, one, four, which was enacted in 2013. If you can believe it, just ten years ago, we did not have a requirement to have open public comment during your public meetings. Meetings were still required to be conducted in, in the sunshine, meaning they were required to be open to the public. The public had a right to attend. Minutes need to, needed to be taken. However, there was not a requirement that before the city council took action, that the public be given an opportunity to be heard unless there was another statute, such as the statute governing adoption of ordinances or other areas of law, that, that specifically required you to take public comment. Prior to 2013, there was no general requirement that the public be given an opportunity to be heard before each proposition or vote. Now, of course, though, we've been living in this world for the last ten years, so the slide you see before you summarizes what this state law means. So, what it means is on the left-hand side, and we'll go over briefly what it doesn't mean, which is on the right-hand side. So, it does require that the public be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard before the official, before any official action is taken by the city council or one of its advisory boards. Now, the statute goes on to say, though, that a reasonable opportunity to be heard does not necessarily need to occur at the same meeting as the final vote. So, several communities would do a workshop on, on an item, and take lots of public comment in the work session, and then, you know, sometimes a week, sometimes two weeks later, be in their formal city council meeting and be ready to take the final action. And in, in some of those contexts, they wouldn't always retake public comment, because they'd already heard sometimes hours of public comment during a work session. And the statute is clear that under state law, that does not necessarily have to occur at the same meeting. Also, it goes on to be clear that it is subject to all of the standard rules and policies of decorum, including time limits, which might limit both the time in which the public has to speak and the time during the meeting that they are given an opportunity to speak. It allows for rules and policies to be applied to groups. So, if you have many members of the same group that wish to present the same position, rather than letting every individual member of that group, under the statute, cities and counties and all local government entities that are subject to the sunshine law and this requirement, can have separate rules that relate to group presentations. And it also recognizes that you can have certain procedures or forms that need to be filled out first, before a speaker can be recognized. I put an example up here of a mechanism that I know you all utilize, which is a speaker card. And so, if you require that a speaker card be completed before a speaker can be recognized, if someone does not complete that card, they could not claim that the city did not follow the state statute here. It further does not apply to emergencies. So, any action that needs to be taken that would, the public health, safety, or welfare would be negatively impacted in a state of emergency for not taking public comment. Ministerial actions, which includes approval of minutes, which is a non-discretionary matter that you have to do at, at every meeting to comply with the sunshine law. So, there's no opportunity for the public to be heard on those types of ministerial ceremonial or proclamations by the city council. Obviously, these are, chapter two eighty-six we're talking about, so it wouldn't apply to any meetings which are otherwise made statutorily exempt from the sunshine law. So, your labor negotiation meetings, if you have litigation shade meetings or other meetings which fall under a specific statutory exemption where no public is present, this would not apply to those. And it, it further doesn't apply to quasi-judicial decisions. And I know you might be thinking, "That's kind of odd," because quasi-judicial often involves a lot of public participation. But what the statute says there is, is you default to your rules for quasi-judicial decisions, which still require you to give due process and allow for the parties to be heard, but it defaults to your rules. In those quasi-judicial decisions, the state statute does not apply. And what this means at its core, and what the statute actually expressly, expressly says, that if you follow your own adopted rules and procedure, you are deemed to be in compliance with this statute. What it also goes on to say is, we're often accustomed in the world of dealing with the sunshine laws, that if for some reason the sunshine laws are, are not followed, meaning notice of the meeting hasn't been given, minutes weren't taken, one of those fundamental tenets of the sunshine law, we're, we're often, in this area of law, we're always telling you all that it means the action is void ab initio. But if there's some technical glitch or technical violation of chapter two eighty-six, zero, one, one, four, this statute that we've just gone over governing public participation during public meetings, the statute actually expressly says that violations of this section do not void the action that was taken. Now, that doesn't mean there's not consequences. Certainly, there can be. It can subject the city to actions for injunction. It can subject the city to attorney's fees, but it doesn't ultimately void the action, and that's expressly in the statute. I'm going to move on now to federal law, which is really the area that has the most developed case law in this area, which is the First Amendment under our United States Constitution. So, many of you may be familiar that the First Amendment does protect every individual's freedom for speech. But those rights are not unlimited, and it's expressly in controlling case law over the state of Florida, that citizens do not have a right to communicate their views at all times and in any manner that may be desired. So, our, our First Amendment rights, like many of other, other rights under the Constitution, are in some ways limited. And in this context, they're limited in one important way, which is the type of forum or the type of public place that you are matters. And it impacts the limitations that can be on those First Amendment rights. Now, I'm going to show you all a picture of three different types of public forums. And this is not an actual test. You all don't have to decide to chime in. But does anybody have a guess as to what the three different types of forums that are shown here are?
Yeah, you see them?
Can you not see them yet? They might be a little small. Well, on the left, you can see what is referred to as a traditional public forum, a traditional open public forum. In the middle, it's kind of sort of like a, it looked like a city hall-looking type of facility. Those are often considered limited public forums. And then you can sort of see this business meeting that might be going on behind closed doors. That would be considered a closed public forum. And I'm going to explain to you what each of those mean and why it matters in the context of First Amendment rights during your public participation at city council meetings. So, the first type of forum, a traditional public forum. When we talk about traditional public forums, we're, well, first, each of these forums all allow for some amount of limitation. Oh, I accidentally skipped forward here. Each of these forums allow for some amount of limitation by the government. Traditionally, the government can always place reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on First Amendment rights. But the manner and to which degree that that can occur depends on the nature of, of the forum. So, in a traditional public forum, what you see here, two people riding their bikes through a park, and that's because public properties such as streets, sidewalks, and parks have long been considered to be the most open traditional places for open public discourse. And it's also the area where the government's ability to regulate that is most restricted. So, while reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions can be placed on First Amendment expression within these types of traditional public forums, the regulations must still be content neutral, meaning people can talk about pretty much whatever it is they want to talk about, so long as it doesn't fall outside of protected speech. So, you all may have heard the example that you can never cry "fire" in a, in a crowded public place when there's no fire. That's not protected speech, and there's no First Amendment rights to incite that kind of reaction in the public. But, but in general, there, there's no content restrictions. People can be restricted, you know, where they might be able to engage in certain speech, like handing out handbills or, or things like that. But, but for the most part, these are the most open areas of free expression. Now, a limited public forum is slightly different, because it's not open to the public at large for discussion of any and all topics. But these are the types of spaces where the government has really reserved the forum, either for certain groups or activities, or the discussion of certain topics. And we're going to come back to this one, because as you may have just seen on the slide, city council meetings have been expressly recognized by the Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals, which governs the entire state of Florida, as not being a place for endless public commentary, but instead a limited platform to discuss the topic at hand. We're going to come back to that, because I know that's the focus of our presentation this evening. But I wanted to round out the discussion, because places which are not open to the general public at all, or which have restricted access, there may be areas within your city hall facilities that staff need a certain key or a card to access. The Eleventh Circuit, again, has held that certain internal areas of government buildings are completely non-public, meaning there's no public for the right, there's no public right to access those areas, or for the public to, for example, participate in meetings between the city manager and his staff. So, going back to the purpose of our presentation tonight, so now we've kind of laid the framework that we are in, what's called a limited public forum. So, what does that mean? Well, it means that restrictions, those time, place, and manner restrictions need only be reasonable and viewpoint neutral. We're going to talk what it means to be reasonable in the next few slides, particularly in light of public participation at the city council meetings. But I want to pause for a moment to highlight the distinction between viewpoint neutral and what you may have heard me comment about when we were talking about parks and traditional public forum, which is content neutrality. So, it's a little bit different. They're separate but related concepts, and sometimes courts even use those terms interchangeably. But they're very important in a limited public forum, such as you're in, right now, at your public council meeting. Because in a limited public forum, regulations don't actually have to be content neutral, meaning regulations can require that a speaker keep on topic, either to the agenda item at hand or to city business generally. However, that is separate from viewpoint neutrality, meaning a regulation cannot allow people to speak or to speak longer or shorter based on what their particular position is on an issue. Meaning, if you're about to adopt an ordinance, you can't allow people who only want to speak in favor of that ordinance to be heard while not allowing people who may wish to speak against it. So, that's the difference between viewpoint neutrality and content neutrality. And in a limited public forum, while you have to be viewpoint neutral, you can have reasonable restrictions on the content or the topics that you're there to discuss. And how does that play into the reasonableness in general? Because what is reasonable? I mean, we talk about this term in the area of law, and of course, like any lawyer would say, it depends. But at least we have carved out from case law in this area what it depends on. So, first, it's always assessed in light of the purpose of the forum and all of its surrounding circumstances. So, we just spoke about how when you're in a city council meeting, often the very purpose of that forum is for you to get city business done, for you to efficiently deal with and address the public business that needs to be taken official action on, and for you to manage that with the public's right to be heard. It also looks at whether or not the public has alternative channels for communication. So, just because the public might be limited in terms of how much time or the topics that it can discuss with you at various city council meetings, it doesn't mean that the public can't reach out to you and express their viewpoints or just, or express any number of topics in, in many other ways. Many, I bet every single one of you has a city-issued email that the public can reach you all at individually, or they can submit documents to the clerk, or written materials, or statements for the council to, to review outside of the constraints of a, of a public meeting. And all of those have been recognized as valuable and reasonable alternatives to communication, such that the public doesn't just have this one opportunity to speak to you. They have all these different ways that they can engage with you. And so, the fact that they might be limited in this one context, when you all are gathering to get your business done, courts have recognized as being reasonable. And because we're on the topic specifically of city council meetings, it's really all about balancing. And there are some really good quotes from some courts that I wanted to share with you when it comes to balancing the hard work that you all are here to do in your city council meetings. Courts have explicitly recognized that one of the things you have to balance is preventing disruption, ensuring efficiency, and because you have to balance those two things, governments can enact regulations that confine their meetings to specific subject matters, such as those that are on your agenda and certain time constraints. Otherwise, courts have gone on, "To allow repetitious questions and arguments not related to an agenda topic would truly be to deny the presiding officer, or the mayor, or the chair, the authority to regulate irrelevant debate at a public meeting, and would cause meetings to drag on interminably." So, courts have recognized you all need to get your business done, and you do need to get it done efficiently. Moreover, courts have further recognized that disruptive behavior at public meetings deprives others of the opportunity to be able to voice their opinions. So, with this balancing, we were asked by Richard and his team to take a look at your policies and procedures, and particularly the time limits that you all allow for the public to be heard, and to compare that with other cities of similar sizes. And so, we prepared this chart, which you should see up on the screen below. And you can see it ranges from cities with estimated population size of around sixty thousand, and that's a little bit south of you, in Palm Beach Gardens, all the way down to cities that are, you know, a little, maybe a little bit smaller than you, of forty-one thousand or so. And by the way, you know, this is not one of those bright-line tests where what everybody else is doing is always right, and, and you follow the pack. But, but you can see here are certain patterns, both with regard to how much the general public is offered to speak on, in gen, we'll call general public comment, or the Latin term vox populi. That's sort of any city business that's not on your agenda. And there's a pretty standard of, you know, three to five minutes. There's one outlier there of two minutes in North Miami. But most are, are, the overwhelming majority are allowing three minutes for the, for that type of public comment, and a few allowing a little bit more, up to four. Agenda items, again, you see kind of the, some of the same patterns. Approximately three minutes is the overwhelming. Approximately three minutes is the overwhelming majority. There are some outliers with some only allowing for as little as two minutes on agenda items and then, you know, others allowing up to four. We included this column of the consent agenda because the consent agenda is really a parliamentary proceeding, but it's one that has gained attention and, and at least one court has actually issued direct rulings on the public's right to be heard during a consent agenda. Now, a consent agenda, and this is consistent with your rules and policies as well, generally contains items that are routine in nature, non-controversial, and don't deviate from prior direction or policy. And most importantly, I think for this legal analysis, is the consent agenda is taken as one vote. So in other words, it's essentially one agenda item. In most, in some communities that I represent over here on the East Coast, they'll combine these two columns, general comment and consent agenda, and they'll say, anybody who wants to be heard on any city business or on the city business that's on our consent agenda, you have one opportunity for three minutes. So it looks like kind of on the West Coast, although Pinellas Park is over there too, you can see Pinellas Park allows three minutes across the board. That's a community up here by me in Tampa Bay. That three minutes in general public comment and consent agenda, that's actually one three minutes, that's not, that's not two. Because it recognizes that the consent agenda is by function items that are routine and non-controversial in nature. And because of the volume that you all have to conduct in your meetings and the government's interest in conducting those public business meetings in an efficient and effective and timely manner, at least one court, actually in Palm Beach County, has upheld treating the consent agenda differently and allowing only one opportunity to be heard for the same amount of time as a regular agenda item, no matter how many items a speaker wishes to address on the consent agenda. So you're a little bit of an outlier here, as you can see in, in the research comparing Titusville to communities of a similar size in that you actually allow for up to 10 minutes on consent. Fort Pierce is the only other community that reported allowing that, and I'll say that's actually not in their codified rules or their ordinances. That was colloquially communicated from their clerk's office in that the mayor will often allow that if there's time. So that's not actually a codified rule in Fort Pierce either. But also, even if, even if it was, you know, the, the allowing of that amount of time is, as you can see, you know, pretty much an outlier when compared to cities of comparable size. Most, as you're seeing, are looking at that, you know, anywhere from two to four, some to five minutes for the consent agenda items. And those are all regardless of how many items on the consent agenda that a speaker wishes to address. Because again, the nature of the consent agenda is one vote, and it's generally held for items that are routine, non-controversial, and don't deviate from prior direction or policy. So that concludes my presentation. I tried to keep it within 10 minutes, but I can tell you what we synthesized down here was a lot more volume of case law than that. But I hope it's been helpful to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? I see no questions. There's a lot there, that's for sure.
And I'm going to be sure that Richard has a copy of this presentation as well. He can share it with the city clerk, and you all can keep it as part of your public records. But thank you for the opportunity to present here with you tonight, and I hope you all have a lovely evening.
Well, thank you for being here via TV. We appreciate you. Thank you. City Manager.
On to item 5D, which is PFM Financial Advisors will provide a presentation for, to city council for the end of the fiscal year, FY '22.
Good evening, council members. I am Scott Sweetin. I'm a senior managing consultant with PFM Asset Management. And just to clarify, I, I see on the agenda, it shows PFM Financial Advisors. That's actually a completely separate entity after we were acquired in 2021, so just possibly edits in the minutes after the meeting. And for the sake of time, I'm going to actually make this briefer than expected. If we take a look at current market themes, these have been relevant for at least the last year and a half, two years. Taking a look at the U.S. economy, and again, this is your annual report from November of 2021 through November of 2022. I will provide some positive updates that have taken place since then, such as inflation slowing down, yields becoming much more attractive. We're obviously starting to put money to work at much higher yields for you, which that's going to certainly reduce the unrealized losses that you're looking at on paper currently. But just in general, up until the third quarter of 2022, inflation was persistent across the board, no matter what indicator you looked at, Consumer Price Index, Producer Price Index, personal consumption expenditure, there we go. Through the fourth quarter and into the first part of this year, we have started to see a pretty dramatic slowing in all three of those areas, actually. CPI has come down consistently over the last two or three months. The PPI has come down as well. Personal consumption expenditure, most recent reading on that was around four and a half percent. Now, the Fed's target rate for inflation is 2%, so we still have quite a bit of room to go before we reach the target level there. The Fed has maintained that they're going to be very persistent moving forward. We saw them very active with 75 basis point hikes multiple times. At the December meeting, they actually started to reduce that activity. They raised in increments of 50 basis points, so they started to actually give commentary that inflation was slowing, there is evidence there, and they're still going to remain persistent going forward. But for all intensive purposes, the forecast in February, February 1st will be when they actually decide that should be a 25 basis point rate hike. And then the following meeting, probably 25 basis points as well. But you're going to hear this continually, the Fed is going to harp on the phrase that everything is going to be data-dependent or data-driven. So from month to month, whatever information we're looking at, that's really going to dictate the strategy for the Fed. Outside of that, the labor market continues to remain strong. The most recent reading unemployment rate was at three and a half percent. That still puts us at a level of the pre-COVID February of 2020. That's the last time that we were at three and a half percent. At the peak of COVID, I think we reached about 14 and a half percent, so significant improvement there. As I stated, the Fed is going to continue to remain very active moving forward. Projections for the Fed funds rate continues to climb, possibly above 5%. And obviously, I'll explain how rising interest rates affect the market value of any fixed income security. As I said, the Fed was extremely active throughout the year. As rates go up, the market value of any fixed income security has an inverse relationship there. The positive side is when we do hold those until maturity, you're going to receive your principal plus interest. So right now, you're just looking at unrealized losses on paper. Now, just to give you a visual on how significantly yields rose, if we just take a look at the one to three-year treasury, that would actually be your benchmark for the portfolio. From September of '21, we had a very attractive yield of 28 basis points, and you can see how significantly things changed just over your fiscal year. 930 of 2022, that was actually at 4.3%, so a dramatic steepening in the yield curve. Now, as I kind of alluded to, essentially, there's no place to hide. You can't hide in the fixed income arena, you can't hide in equities, everything essentially across the board has been negative. If we just take a look at the left side of this particular slide, you can see the quarterly numbers for Q3, Treasuries, Agencies, Asset Backed Securities, Corporates, A to AAA and Triple B Corporates, all negative returns. And to the right portion of the slide, that's actually the 12-month trailing returns for, again, each of those respective categories, all negative returns across the board. Just to emphasize, we invest for safety, liquidity, and yield. The environment that we're in, it's not possible to have positive returns. An update that I can give you, though, in the fourth quarter of 2022, things are starting to turn around, look more attractive. We actually had a positive performance in your portfolio of 76 basis points. The benchmark was at 73 basis points, so I just wanted to kind of let you know there's more positive news looking forward. This particular slide is, as of September 30th, this is the Fed dot plot, basically just showing the members of the Fed and where they predict interest rates to be and how active. So you can see the first portion of that to the far left, that's 2022. And for the most part, all of the Fed members were pretty much the same line of thought. Looking out 2023, you obviously can see that they do anticipate a couple more rate hikes. And then once we get a little further out in the curve, 2024, you actually start to see a pretty big dispersion among the members where they're actually anticipating rate cuts at that point. And then longer term, you can see that they're anticipating getting back to that target level of 2% for inflation. Now, just as a comparison for year-over-year, taking a look at fiscal year 2021, total market value, $55,208,453. Portfolio effective duration, 1.82 years. Yield at cost, which is actually what the portfolio was yielding, that is 0.74%. Yield at market is 0.52%. In theory, yield at market is basically on a specific date. If we were to have liquidated the entire portfolio, gone back out into the market, repurchased similar or identical instruments, that's the yield that we would have been looking at on any given day in 2021. Now, taking a look at the right portion of the slide, a pretty big difference, as you can tell, total market value, $50,874,630. Some of that differential is due to, there was some money withdrawn from the account, I think around October, there was money put back in around December of 2022. And then any differential there would be the fluctuation in market value for the fixed income securities, just based on the environment. Portfolio effective duration, 1.65 years. So you can actually see in the calendar year of 2022, we started to take a much more defensive posture. We're actually shorter than the benchmark because we're able to pick up attractive yields while not going further out in the curve and essentially extending your portfolio when we don't need to at this point. And yield at market, which would be indicative of where yields were at at the end of 2022, The pie charts on the bottom, sector allocation, those are fairly identical, really not much of a difference in how we allocated the portfolio. Most of this is a bit repetitive. The only area that I'm going to touch on here, if we take a look at portfolio effective duration, 1.65 years, and the benchmark effective duration of 1.76 years, that's just a good indicator showing you that we are taking a defensive posture. We don't have to go out as long as the benchmark, we're still able to pick up. In some cases, we're picking up corporates in excess of 5%. So you're going to really start to see that make an impact as we move forward, reducing the unrealized losses that you're looking at. But everything else is information that I've already covered, the sector allocation in the upper right quadrant, the duration distribution in the bottom right quadrant, and on the bottom left, that is just ratings from Standard and Poor. Now, on to returns. For the third quarter, again, we were still in a very challenging environment. The benchmark was down a negative 1.56%. The portfolio was down a negative 1.19. Now, we never like to present negative returns, but in all reality, in best-case scenario for us is outperforming the benchmark, which we did. Looking at the last 12 months, from September 30th to September 30th, benchmark was down a negative 4.86%. The portfolio was down a negative 4.4%. So again, we outperformed the benchmark over that time period. And just looking out over a three-year, five-year, and 10-year period, we outperformed the benchmark by a pretty healthy margin there as well. Now, the next two slides are basically just compliance-based, particularly based on your investment policy and where we had you allocated at the end of the third quarter of 2022. The gray portion of the bar is indicating the levels permitted by your investment policy for each of those given sectors. The blue shaded region is where you were actually allocated at the end of the third quarter. So just a quick visual takeaway, we've got a very healthy buffer across the board for each of those categories, so you're in great shape there from a compliance aspect. This is max maturity analytics, and again, the gray portion of the bar indicates the limits of your investment policy for maturities for each of these categories. The blue shaded region is basically giving you the, the average maturity for, for each of those sectors that you may be invested in. So again, from a compliance standpoint, great shape. The next two slides are just a great general overview of the portfolio. It gives you the security type, the percentage that that comprises of the overall portfolio, and then we actually have ratings from S&amp;P, Moody's, and Fitch. So just a great overall bird's eye view of the portfolio in general. And that particular slide, obviously just showing certificate of compliance, so you are in compliance with your investment policy as of September 30th, 2022. And those would be the prepared remarks I would have. I'll open it up for any questions, if you have any.
Questions? So in a nutshell, in common language, how are we doing?
We're, we're doing better.
Say, say it again?
I said, we're doing better. I, I like to say it's less worse than it was.
If I ask it differently, will you answer it better?
It's still going to be the same. We're, we're doing better. That's why I wanted to show you the performance in the fourth quarter, where we're actually starting to get into positive territory for total returns while still outperforming the benchmark. So as we continue to put money to work, well above 4% and in some instances, 5, 5.5%, that's going to start to make a dramatic impact going forward, so.
Yeah, I, I hear that. That, that sounds good, and I also like that you're hitting the benchmarks. We'd like to clearly, obviously, as, as you were saying, let's get it better, better, and let's hope the economy helps us do that. Comparatively speaking to other municipalities, we are standing how? Fairly well?
It's pretty standard across the board because, for the most part, the way that we invest, let's say a one to three-year strategy, those are fairly similar in all intensive purposes. I mean, some entities may be able to invest in other instruments or they're comfortable with different ratings for a corporate bond or things of that nature. So there may be slight incremental differences, but pretty much across the board, I mean, there's really, there's no place to hide. Everyone is in the same situation, so.
All right. Well, I appreciate that very much, and thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
I'm with you, Nate. City Manager.
And last is department spotlights. This is the beginning. You'll see a, each department will bring a video.
Very good.
We will skip February because we've got a rather robust agenda planned for February. So the Police Department has made an overview on this particular video on how technology is changing the way law enforcement conducts business. So with that, Chief Lau.
Thank you very much. Yes, so this is my 31st year in law.
Yes, so this is my 31st year in law enforcement, and it's like a bowling ball and an apple that's being compared to the, how law enforcement has changed. Not only has law enforcement changed, so has the officers. But if we could roll the video. My name is John Lau, and I am the chief of police at the Titusville Police Department. And this is our 2023 department spotlight. Technology is one of the strongest tools we have for keeping our city as safe as possible. While funding new technology remains an ongoing challenge, we are proud of the way our agency has been able to utilize forfeiture funds seized from criminal activity and five-year budget projections for planning our future needs. With the continued support of our city council and the city manager, we look forward to being as efficient and effective as possible moving forward. This brief video presentation highlights some of the newest technology we have deployed recently as part of our commitment to keeping Titusville safe.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Lauren Watson. I'm excited to share with you some of the specific tools and newest technology our team is now using as a part of our commitment to the community. ABL, or Automatic Vehicle Locator, is a software that provides real-time mapping of our on-duty patrol units to ensure the closest unit possible is immediately dispatched to an emergency call. This robust mapping software allows patrol supervisors to monitor where resources are throughout the city at any time. Along with identifying the car number, direction of travel, and the officer assigned, graphics in the mapping screen will also identify which unit has its lights and sirens activated. The software portion of this technology is in the microprocessor installed in the car that also controls all of the vehicle's emergency equipment. This combination of a microprocessor and GPS unit is also making traffic stops and road hazard scenes much safer because our patrol car flashing blue lights will synchronize with other units at the scene, slow the flash pattern, and dim the brightness when the vehicle becomes stationary. Studies have shown flashing or strobing emergency lights can cause human vision to misjudge the distance of the hazard. Lights that slowly fade or remain steady reduce the chance of driver distraction. In the near future, as we plan with FDOT, county, and public works, we will also have traffic signal preemptive technology that will recognize an emergency vehicle approaching in response mode and will prioritize the green traffic signal for that vehicle's direction to make emergency responses much safer for both the officers and the public. Prepared 911 is a system that provides real-time video of a scene to our public safety telecommunicators in our 911 dispatch center while taking a 911 call. This system allows our PSTs to immediately visualize a situation with real-time access and an immediate GPS location of the incident. When a 911 caller is reporting an in-progress crime, suspicious person, reckless driver, or any other urgent incident, they can opt to get an immediate text on the cell they are calling from with a link. If the caller chooses to click on the link, they will immediately be able to hold up their phones and send live video to the 911 center. With enhanced situational awareness, Prepared 911 helps our 911 PSTs work more efficiently across the board and focus on what they do best, saving lives. The system gains vital real-time information directly from mobile devices, which can then be radioed to responding units. This will drastically improve the communication of descriptions and details of an active incident with 911 PSTs. Any video obtained can then be downloaded to the evidence storage instantly. It is important to note that, once the caller hangs up, all contact with the phone is lost. This was an important step for the developers of this software for privacy purposes. Once the caller hangs up, dispatch has no contact whatsoever with the caller. Our department continues to look for ways to avoid high-speed pursuits while still being able to apprehend fleeing suspects and seize their vehicle. StarChase technology is a device that provides police officers with that capability. When using this system, officers will deploy a GPS tag onto fleeing vehicles to safely track and eventually apprehend the suspect. Along with our PIT, or precision immobilizing technique, we can instantly deploy a GPS tracker on a fleeing vehicle. Officers can then safely track the location of a suspect from a safe distance. The device can be deployed from both a front-mounted unit on the front of a police car or from a handheld unit. Police officers have found great success in the past year utilizing this device on numerous occasions. We will continue to seek additional technology to end fleeing vehicle pursuits as quickly and as safely as possible. Assistance from above, or the use of the sheriff's office helicopter, has been a considerable resource for our department over the years. But with recent advancements in drone technology, we now have the ability to get information from above even quicker for a wider variety of incidents. We are now deploying both outdoor and indoor drones to obtain valuable intel information at a variety of scenes. Our outdoor drone can be deployed within minutes to provide aerial and perimeter views and improve intelligence, surveillance, and reconnaissance. Whether it's being deployed over a scene just before a search warrant is served, or searching a wooded area for a missing person, drone technology gives us a considerable tool in public safety. Our indoor drones can be deployed in a building to search for a suspect and provide valuable intel on the interior. In the past, we have had to wait as long as an hour for another agency's robot for that resource. With our interior drone, we can deploy it immediately and with fewer limitations. This has proven to be especially valuable for tactical situations, as our scene commanders will have much more information when making assessments at scene. Both drones enable us to quickly launch time-sensitive and more comprehensive responses while reducing risks to lives of the officers and our canines. As a direct response to citizens' concerns, and in an effort to provide critical information to our personnel, Titusville Police Department is employing traffic counter software to allow us to map, manage, and analyze vehicle traffic data. This system is more accurate than digital speedboards because it is discreet and not visible to motorists. It provides an effective solution for monitoring the number of cars on a roadway, the times of those counts, and the speed of every vehicle. It provides the data obtained in a variety of different formats that our officers can choose to view. Traffic complaints such as speeding and reckless driving are among our most common complaints from citizens. This tracking device can now be deployed on a specific street to obtain factual data on the actual speeding problem and the times that it's occurring. This device not only identifies actual problem areas, but allows us to deploy resources in the right location at the right time.
In conclusion, while we are fortunate to have the technology we just presented, we understand that technology is constantly evolving, which is why our department is committed to an ongoing energetic approach to seeking out new innovative ways to efficiently deliver police services. With the continued support of our city council, city manager, and city staff, we look forward to obtaining future technology and applying it in a practical way so that we can do our part at keeping Titusville a safe place to live and work. Thank you. Wow, that was well done. Well done.
A huge thank you to our media services to put this together. They always do a great job for us.
That was well done. Anything else you guys can add to that?
Just one of the challenges with technology is it changes so rapidly that if we don't act, and that's why it sounds like we're kissing up to all the city moving parts, but truly, we have to get our purchasing and finance involved. And if we don't move rapidly, what we're moving on is going to be obsolete by the time we get it up and running. So our city staff has actually done very well getting things through in a timely manner so we can enjoy it. The other thing is, our staff is second to none for bringing this stuff forward. It's just amazing. Behind us, Major TJ Wright has gotten a few grants recently. We couldn't put all the technology on here, a lot for security reasons, as well as we just wanted to keep the video as brief as possible. But we'll open it up for questions.
I would not even really question. I would just say that in just my six years here in council, you guys have gone a whole different, I mean, technology-wise, you're soaring. And that goes back to the, call it a simple thing, but it's a big thing, the body cams that I know we talked about previously, and we attended a police event down in Melbourne. And we were, I had no idea that we were one of the few in the entire county, that was probably two years ago, that had body cams. I mean, most of them didn't. So I don't, I want to name names of who didn't or who did, but I'm going to say we were one of the very few that had it, and now I'm seeing all these. It's pretty exciting where we're at, and I appreciate the forward thinking by your staff and by city manager and those who helped make this happen. Member Stokel?
Yep, I don't have a question either. I just wanted to say, like, I always appreciate these presentations, and then sometimes I'm like, "Oh, I already know about the police department." And but every time you guys present, I learn something new. Like, you guys are so innovative, and I just appreciate it, and I'm proud that you are with the City of Titusville.
Anybody else?
If I could, I'm going to have our deputy chief explain our new look to our badge.
Yes, so as you can see, we're donning our 100-year anniversary badge. Our history of the department is obviously something everyone's proud of. A little over a decade ago, a family member from a former police officer that served back in the '30s and '40s donated a bunch of pictures to our department, and that generated a lot of excitement about our history. And our accreditation manager, Stacy Woodward, did an outstanding job researching our department. And actually, there was a goldmine with the minutes from city council meetings and different agendas. So two of the highlights were we're able to find out that the very first police car we ever purchased was a 1949 Ford, which, of course, led to our replica 49 Ford, which you guys have all seen at our outreach events and stuff. The additional excitement was that our 100-year anniversary was identified as November of 2023. We actually found the agenda item where the city council created the office of the police chief in November of 1923. So prior to that, there was a marshal that they created in 1909 that did some law enforcement services. But essentially, the police department was created in 1923, and so we're pretty excited. So in November, this past November, we started wearing the anniversary badge, and we'll continue to wear that throughout the year. And then, each officer will be able to keep that badge as a memento. Further, we were able to obtain some badges for our civilian staff so that they could then keep that as a memento. And then, in addition to that, we've decided to present you all, city council members and the mayor, with a badge to represent our appreciation for everything you guys do.
Wow, thank you so very, very much. Or watch out.
And I'll add in, unlike the basic metal coins that you got from the fire department.
I was just going to say that.
These are actually solid gold, so I didn't want to brag, but we just wanted to mention that.
I was getting ready to beg, saying, "Well, look, the fire department gave us coins, you know, and you come up with this. Wow, wow. Very, very nice and very cool that you guys were able to grab hold of the fact that this is the 100th year. You know, you hate those things that go by and say, "Oh, last year was 100th year." So that is awesome.
It's hard to believe Chief Lau's been a charter member of that organization for 100 years, you know.
Oh, member Nelson?
I was going to be smart and like and say, and I remember 30 years ago when they gave us all computers and said, "Learn them."
I get my first one next week.
It was a shock.
I'll play off that quickly. I have to, I remember at Titusville High School, and we got email, and I was supposed to make everything a lot more efficient. So needless to say, it didn't. With that, thank you so very, very much. I'm very proud of you guys all the time, and it's just been an honor to work with you and for you. And again, thank you very much, and you guys remain my heroes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, clearly, we're late, but we now are done with all the presentations.
Yes, sir. Your last item for the agenda is public comment.
Yep, petitions and requests from the public, please.
Bill Klein, 3 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I request city council to cancel the lawsuit against adding the citizens' right to clean water to the city charter. Over 83% of the Titusville citizens voted yes for the city charter change. Why did you choose Speak Up Titusville to sue? You should follow Florida law and make the charter change that was approved by the citizens. Then, if Florida wants to overrule your change, you should hire lawyers and sue Florida for not allowing you to restore the IRL. Suing Speak Up Titusville makes no sense. They have no control or authority over Titusville. You could sue the citizens of Titusville if you do not do what they approved with their votes. They are the ones that elected you to represent them. They want you to amend the charter chains. I also request city council to accept the TEC request to monitor and test stormwater systems. I request that you start by testing the Sandpoint Park ponds and calculate the annual amount of pollutants flowing into the IRL from the expected annual average of 54 inches of rain. If the pollution is found to be too much, it should be sent to a large wetland retention area and allowed to percolate into the aquifer. That would remove the pollution and supply fresh water to the aquifer. It could also be a nature preserve and tourist attraction like the Orlando Wetlands. This retention area could have walking trails for people. I'm making these requests in an email because I can't give my reasons in the allowed three minutes during the city council meeting. I have sent you all emails to give my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Sett Avenue. This is what Mr. Klein was talking about. And we have a state petition going on, so I know all you council members would like to sign that, so just letting you remind you. So here it is. Something's happening in our community. If you're reading the Florida Today paper Friday, Mr. Torres wrote a composition about Crosley Green. So I've got two, made two posters about what's going on. This is national. When I put U.S. Supreme Court, this is national. So Titusville MEMS is going international right now. So we're going to, it's going to the Supreme Court about what's happened to Crosley Green. He's over, I think he's about 36 years. He's in prison. He was on the death row. I was with him this Sunday, sat with him, and talked with him for a while. And it's a terrible thing that's happened to him. It's horrible, and he just doesn't want to, he wants the truth out, he wants to be free. And it's been dishonesty by the state attorney's office to withhold information of his exculpatory evidence, and that has to do with the Brady material, also called discovery. So thank you for letting me share that to you. And so I expect there'll be some demonstrations that encourage you to join in. Other thing is that this is, this is what you've seen before, these red signs right here. I even went to a mayor's door and gave him one of these and put the other one on his door, I believe. There was three of them. And they went on the doors of City Hall. I'm hoping you give me a little more time on this because what's happened is that I've sent you emails, phone calls, and so forth. You guys don't respond, and this is, it's a sewage spill. There's a picture of the sewage spill over on Greenwood Street and so forth, and it's on nine city streets. There's other photos, and here's the Florida statute that this guy right here, he denies. He denies all this happens, even though I put posters posted on buildings, churches, people's houses, and so forth. He denies it ever happened. This guy right here, he's lying. Our city manager's lying. This lying is open, notorious, arrogant, blatant. It's horrible. It's not like Bernie Madoff. See, Bernie, we didn't see Bernie Madoff go around, you know, we see it happening in violent halls, and he just goes ahead and just does it, just openly and notoriously. It's not like Hitler.
Thank you.
I'd like some more time, please. I'd like some more time, please.
I see that.
You should listen now. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marla Spruickel. I live at 3 Indian River Avenue in Titusville. December 16th is Bill's birthday, so I usually remember when something happens on his birthday that it happened on December 16th. So December 16th, 2020, we were, it was during the pandemic, and we, every organization we belonged to had their meetings online. We were watching a webinar. As a matter of fact, I looked up what webinar I was watching that morning. It was one presented by Dr. Chuck Jacoby, of all things. But anyway, after the webinar was over, we were looking out the window, and we can see Sandpoint Park from there, and there were hundreds of birds, white birds down there by the pond. And I said, holy cow, look at all those white birds. And one of my Facebook friends had posted that there is a crested caracara in the area hanging out with the wood storks at Sandpoint. So I grabbed my binoculars and went out on the breezeway to see if I could see the crested caracara. What I saw was ponds full of dead fish, and all those white birds were there for the banquet. That was December 16th. On December 19th, two days later, we had a sewer spill. And that was what was reported to the DEP, that the sewer spill started on December 19th. Now, I don't know how all those dead fish knew the sewer spill was coming and died in advance, but if you believe it started on December 19th, I've got some swampland to sell you.
Thank you. Thank you. Petitions or requests? All right, let's go at 10 till, be right on time at 10 till. We're recessed until 10 till.